Order at 7:02 and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with you. Who approved the agenda? If I could make a motion, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda is approved. And a motion for approval of open session minutes from April 11th, 2016.
Motion to approve the open session minutes of April 11th, 2016.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the open session minutes are approved. Opening it up to the community, if there are any community comments. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to student comments. It doesn't look like Chris is here tonight. So we'll move right along, this is going to be the speediest meeting ever. Going right over to the superintendents.
All right, well good evening. You have in your packet, and I thought I'd apprise you of where we are with regard to kindergarten registration to date. I know in my budget presentation, as we went through first pass of the budget, we talked about that being a variable. Largely going on the NESTDEC projections, which showed a drop in live birth rates from 2010 to 2011. At this juncture, I am pleased to say, I think we're pretty much at status quo with regard to our kindergarten enrollment of next year versus this year. Okay, as you can see, as the chart shows, as of April 13th, so a little bit more than a week ago, we've got about 79 enrolled potentially at Memorial and 71 enrolled at Clough. You can see too, and I think we, a lot of kudos goes out to our special emerging advisory board and our parent outreach group. We've got some pretty healthy numbers with regard to the SI enrollees. We've got 24 enrolled for kindergarten at Memorial and 16 enrolled at Clough. As I say in my background notes, I think the ideal would be, hopefully we can perhaps equalize those sections. It would be really nice to have something on the order of, you know, 20-ish in each. So we'll work on that in the coming months, but I thought I'd apprise you exactly where we are. Okay, any questions on that? Okay. Okay, so we'll go to happy little thoughts of five-year-olds learning to help care insurance. Just as an update, we're still in the process of negotiations with Harvard Pilgrim Health. Some very mildly positive news, you know, their initial quote to us for renewal was 19.59%. They're now at 17%, still a very, very high renewal rate. We've kind of taken a wait-and-see approach. There's generally about a two-month lag time from when they have their claims reports. So they put those reports out roughly around the 15th of each month. So we got the January of 2016 claims report, just on April 15th. Unfortunately, it wasn't very favorable because right now, at a 12-month gap, we're at about a 101.5% claims ratio, which essentially means they've paid out 1.5% more than they've taken in premiums. So obviously, you know, our position is the same in working with NFP, which acts as our agent in dealing directly with Harvard Pilgrim Health. So we're essentially, if you know anything about the insurance industry, there's four major carriers. We've already reached out to Blue Cross Blue Shield for a quote. NFP will also be working with us to reach out to Fallon and Tufts as well to look at every possible renewal option and hopefully have some leverage as well. So I'll keep you apprised of that, but at this juncture, we're at that 17% increase, which is going to be a challenge for the district, but quite frankly, also a challenge for our employees as well, because that's a very, very high hike. So like I said, I'll keep you apprised of that. And then last but not least, I just, I want to give a plug to our students on the NITMOC Student Council who are sponsoring an event known as Warriors Walking for Warriors 5K. It's a run and a walk this coming Saturday. And it starts at nine o'clock at the high school. The vision is, it's very much a family event because they're also going to have numerous activities. I think they're going to have an inflatable bouncy and obstacle, of course, face painting, burgers, dogs, and so on. And I'm really encouraging everybody to come out because all of their profits are going to go to the Afghanistan Veterans of America organization. So a good cause, a great group of students are putting together. Okay? Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to administrator comments.
I don't think we have any.
Okay. Then passing right along to subcommittee updates. Pam, policy subcommittee. Is there any discussion? So we're just going, moving right along to a vote, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we could get a motion approved. Make a motion to approve the Secure Communities in Schools policy. Second. Any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes. Policy ECAF. Jay, do you have an update on school lunches? School lunch prices and styrofoam usage?
Let's start with the styrofoam piece. Diane has been trying to get prices for trays, just so we know what they cost. It looks to me, based on what we've seen so far, that to buy, say, 1,000 trays, which is approximately what we would probably need throughout the district, might be $10,000. It looks like they're about $10 apiece. But we're still looking for prices on that. One of the challenges is, we probably ideally would like to pilot this in a school first and see how it goes. The ideal place to pilot it would be the high school because the kids are older, more mature, but it would cost us more to get the dishwasher working at the high school than at Clough and Memorial where they basically will turn right on. The one at NITMOC has got some issues and needs to have some repair work. So we're still kind of bouncing around where we want to go or how we want to approach this. So we don't really have, you know, a plan in place yet. We're still trying to get cost factors so we can factor. What I'd like to be able to bring to you is, it's going to cost this in manpower, it's going to cost this in maintenance on the appliances, and this is what the upfront cost is to buy trays, and this is what the investment would be to get the program running.
What about electricity? Do you think that would make a huge difference? No, not really?
No, not enough to worry about it. Unless, you know, we're running it like 25 hours, you know, out of the 24-hour day, but I don't think so. We'll have carports and solar power providing power for us.
Turn that off, right?
Other school lunch prices, I mentioned this at the policy subcommittee meeting. My recommendation is to raise the price 10 cents a lunch to $2.85. I think that buys you about five or six years before you have to address it again, and it kind of keeps us within compliance with the food, the federal food program and what they think we should be charging. It also brings a little bit more revenue in to help support things like dishwashers and plastic trays and additional manpower and that kind of stuff. So that would be my recommendation. It's totally up to you guys, though. I think I gave you last time your basic options. I think you're going to have to go at 5 cents no matter what. I think the last increase we did was 25 cents, believe it or not. I think we went from $1, $2.50 to $2.75, and that was maybe in 2010.
Are we thinking that we're going to vote on this this evening, or?
I think the wise thing to do would be to hold off till May 9th. That way it's published in the agenda in advance.
Okay.
And if that, if somebody wanted to speak to it, they would have an opportunity.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Jay. Okay, do we have any old business?
Can I just make one, just so you guys know? Our first solar field is operational as of a week ago. So we haven't seen around our bills yet, but we are now going to be getting solar credits for at least one of the facilities.
We should really get a picture of that, Jay.
I've been working on it. I have a picture of one panel being constructed, but it really isn't that exciting. But we do have one field up and running.
Excellent.
So I was kind of happy to hear that after seven years of doing it.
That's great. Okay, so under new business, we're going to discuss school start times. And I know Dr. Murchek put together a presentation for some of the details, some of the factors that need to be considered.
Jay, can you turn on the smartboard, please? I'm going to warn everybody that the smartboard is making a very funny noise.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I hope that this gets up and running. Otherwise, I'm going to be doing a lot of describing. I think I'm a pretty good describer, but it's probably better that you have something to look at. I want to use truth in advertising here for my cover. Okay, the picture in the lower right-hand corner of the cute little second graders at Memorial, that's a real picture. That's, this is Cartimone's kids. The kid in the upper left-hand corner, that's really not a student at NITMOC. It's just a stock photo, okay? It would be really rude to, like, I, this poor yawning girl.
What your daughter's doing.
So anyway, to start, why has this become a topic? A topic not only across the state, but nationally. It really comes down to two reports that have come out in the last two years. One in 2014, a fairly lengthy policy statement, which I've included in your packet, about school start times and really a national epidemic of adolescents not receiving enough sleep. And then just last August, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, also kind of reiterated what the American Academy did as far as considering it to be a public health crisis as far as less and less sleep for adolescents. So we probably all know this, but teenagers that are developing need between eight and a half and nine and a half hours per sleep. Hours per sleep. I really wish Chris was here to, in his own inimitable style, tell us how much sleep he gets and how much of his peers actually get. But as you can see, the statistics do show from the CDC that two-thirds of high school students across the country are getting less than eight hours. So what are some of the consequences of sleep loss? I'm sure you're cognizant of all of these. But obviously, when you don't have enough sleep, it's difficult to pay attention, which leads to obviously deficits in learning and therefore academic achievement. It's also tied to anxiety and depression. Also, there's a lot of research, particularly from the CDC, about with less sleep, tends to come unhealthy eating and as a result, lack of physical activity and also obesity. And there's also plenty of research out there about motor vehicle crashes because of lack of sleep. So I think this is very much common sense, and I think most of us would clearly agree with the American Academy and the CDC have come out with. So in their policy statement, they make a series of, I believe, six, five or six common sense recommendations. One about we need to do more with adolescents and parents regarding sleep needs and optimum sleep hygiene. Very strong advocacy for you really need to wind down, okay? I thought of you, Diane, when I was reading the policy statement about electronic devices in the bedroom. And, you know, I think about my own teenage daughters with, you know, the phone is literally by the bed and all that sort of stuff. You know, getting the word out of what leads to a solid night's sleep. Again, eliminating factors that contribute to a chronic sleep deprivation. And really, the whole piece, and this ties into another conversation about homework and about assessments and about reasonableness. That's a whole other separate conversation, but I think that comes into play as well. Getting the word out there of what the effects are on chronic sleep deprivation, including short-term and long-term morbidity. I sent as an addendum to the packet about some of the work Ashland is doing right now. They've made a decision to change their start times, but they're intentionally holding off till 17, 18. And they're using a full 18 months to do a lot of work with their parents and the community at large about this issue. And then really, the piece that gets all the attention is, they didn't pull any punches. And they said, look, our recommendation is that all middle schools and high schools should aim for a start time no earlier than 8:30. And they also say, you should probably also take into account your bus times and your commute times. And as I will note, generally in Mendon Upton, we're talking about 45 minutes to a full hour is when our, most of our bus routes start. So, you know, it's not uncommon. Our high school kids are getting on the bus aboard 6:30, quarter of seven. It's not uncommon. It's, I'm sure you all know. So with these two reports, we've seen a lot of districts starting to rethink this. And this is a report just from a couple of months ago about Newton, which is now in the process of studying this.
I feel really like run down, kind of just like drowsy at school, which usually affects my score.
Savannah is a high school sophomore who also works part-time after school. She could lose cash if Newton begins the school day later, but there are good reasons to make a change.
Yeah, when kids don't get enough sleep, it adversely affects their emotions. They become much more volatile in their emotion.
Dr. Seidler says more sleep means better mental and physical health and improved school performance.
Important that schools don't start at 7, 7:30 in the morning because they just can't get enough sleep.
It's under study in Newton schools.
Making a start time change is complicated for a lot of logistical and financial reasons.
There's a lot at stake.
Extracurricular activities, sports, the arts, then it's student employment, family concerns.
They don't have as much time to work because it conflicts with homework, their sleep, and it sort of pushes the pendulum back the other way.
Newton Shoe Barn employs teens as part-timers, a help to business and a good first job.
Even when my alarm goes off and I end up sleeping for an extra half an hour, I feel more ready for the rest of my day.
I think on average, I get about five hours of sleep.
I personally don't think that we should start school any later.
No decisions are made yet, but with health as the key issue, it seems likely in years to come, Newton teens could hear that school bell ring just a little later. In Newton, I'm Pam Cross, WCVB, East Center 5.
So that highlights Newton.
Did that have a, if we need superintendents, Newton had that?
No, actually, and I think Lee actually attended. The MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, had a meeting in Newton on start times very recently, right? Couple of weeks ago? Yeah. So something to keep in mind is, believe it or not, three-quarters of all high schools in the Commonwealth do start before 7:30, including us. Okay? But there is a totally non-inclusive list of schools that are studying it and looking at implementation in either 17 or 18 to a later start time for their high schools. And one that's gotten a lot of attention is the Middlesex League. It's basically that cluster kind of heading up towards the North Shore right off 128. So, you know, your Arlington, your Burlington, your Lexington. They've kind of agreed, all the superintendents and the high school principals, along with their school committees, to study it collectively. You've got some other districts that have recently, in the last two to four years, have moved their start times for the high school somewhere in the 8 to 8:30 range. And then, as I said, and I think I gave you the memo in the packet, Ashland has recently announced that the high school is going to transition to an 8:30 start time. I think they're in the ballpark of around 7:30 this school year. So where are we in Mendon Upton? You can see our start and finish times. You can see our elementaries start at a very civil time of 9:15. So does the middle school, starting at 8:25. It's just really the high school at 7:25, which would be a time that is earlier than the APA recommendations. So what are the challenges? I think you heard a little bit of it in that snippet on Newton. Right now, we run three tiers of busing, you know, starting with the high school, then the middle school, and then elementary. So conceivably, could you say, okay, we're going to go down to two tiers and maybe make the high school and the middle school at the same start time? Potentially, you're looking at additional costs for busing if you were to add more buses. You know, I think the reality is, we're stuck in a system that the foundation, quite frankly, is in the 19th century and it's based on an agrarian system that we want the older kids to come home and work in the fields and take care of the little ones. But there is still a certain reality of high school kids getting home first, looking after their younger siblings, and so on. So if we were to shift any school time, you're talking about a paradigm shift, particularly with regard to childcare arrangements and responsibilities. Particularly at the high school, there's the issue of after-school athletics and the times that our contests begin. We beat it. I'm just going to have to do a little describing. And then, you know, we do have a fairly decent amount of kids at the high school who have after-school employment, so that's an issue. I also put contractual obligations. Our start times and finish times for our schools are detailed in our contracts. And then I would say just the change process in general, that, you know, you're changing a very, very well-established paradigm. And, you know, as you know, change is always a difficult thing for all stakeholders. So my last slide, which is just an absolutely brilliant slide, and I'm sad, deeply saddened that we can't see it.
Go ahead.
I don't know. But essentially, I think the essential question is, should the district establish some type of study committee to look at what the stakeholders want? I find it, oh, there it is, right there. It's kind of interesting. You can go online and find a ton of districts across the state that have started this process within the last few months. One of the districts, Malden, they did a pretty comprehensive survey with all stakeholders, staff, kids, parents. And they pretty, particularly at the high school, which starts at like 7:15, they all pretty much said 65, 70% were completely content with our start and finish time. So I think that's in the realm of possibility. I know, John, you have an anecdote to report with regard to the mock town meetings that were done.
Kelly and Jay can certainly add into this conversation, too. We ran two mock town meetings during our 21st Century Learning Conference that they facilitated for us, a junior and a senior, and on the warrant in both of those meetings was, should we change the start time? And I think it was presented to the kids as either 7:30, 7:25, 7:30, what we have now, or move footfall with the elementary. So be that much of a later 9:15 starting time. I expected the kids, because I, well, I hold the doors in the morning and I see them coming in drowsy, oftentimes clutching a coffee. I'm doing the same. I expected them to jump all over the change. And there was some reluctance. They value their after-school time. They have very busy young people, and they have jobs, they participate in sports. And so, and we discussed it also at school council, which is teachers and parents and students. And the same, we reached the same conclusion that if it were a foot-flop of elementary and high school start times, there was some concern about the loss of after-school time, whether it's earning, childcare, or extracurricular activities. Anything you want to add from being part of those discussions?
Because you were the moderator, right?
I was the moderator for that. Yeah, it was an interesting conversation. Too bad Chris isn't here because Chris was very adamant that we should switch it. But the thing that got said the most was, if kids got to sleep later, they would just stay up later, they're not going to get any more sleep, they're just going to go to bed an hour later, sleep an hour later, it would all be the same. And they would lose out on their work time. Chris's argument was, we'll get up and go to work before you go to school. So he was all gung-ho about it. But I was actually quite surprised. I would say it was probably, pretty much overwhelmingly, the kids were not interested in switching the start time. I think what we had on the warrant was 7:30 or 9 o'clock. We kind of arbitrarily picked a time. We didn't give them much, you know, they could have amended it because they did that with a couple others, but they didn't seem interested.
Yeah, I would second what these two just said about, they were concerned about the after-school activities, walking especially. Because I think that anyone that plays sports would know that that would be accommodated if there was to be changes in the morning schedule. But I was surprised. I really, I really thought they, like John just said, they jump at the chance to sleep an hour later. But they got up and they said, if you're going to let us sleep an hour later, we're just going to go to bed an hour, we're just going to go to bed an hour later as well. So the same amount of time, but still, they'd still be spending sleeping.
Now, that's interesting because at the mass meeting I went to, several studies were cited by a parent who is a doctor, who lives in Newton, that says, first, the brain science indicates that kids about the age of 14 cannot go to bed really and sleep well before 11:00 PM. And additionally, delaying start times doesn't equal staying up later. Several studies have shown that it actually doubles the amount of kids getting at least eight hours of sleep a night. So although anecdotally, people may say that, that the science doesn't support that. So that's just, you know, when you look at the science of this, it's incontrovertible. There is no reason scientifically not to do this. It's a matter of logistics, oftentimes. You know, that's where the details have to be ironed out if it's something we choose to do. It's definitely a large conversation that has to be had before. The discussions are made, but the science does support, you know, later start times for kids. And additionally, that sleeping in on the weekends that kids do gives them almost the same effect as jet lag. So it takes them three days to get back into, you know, a regular sleep cycle. So when they binge sleep on the weekends, that's also adding to the issues. You know, additionally, athletes are 1.7 times more likely to have sports injuries if they get less than eight hours of sleep. So many times when we need to bring the athletic staff into the conversation, sometimes statistics like that. My data, the names of videos, I have lots of info. And contact people if you need more.
And I would say too, not to jump in, but I have anecdotes that support the reasons that a later start time would be good for kids, whether it's seeing the same students in Montardi often or knowing that the classrooms are much brighter at 7:30 has a point. one tardy often, or knowing that the classrooms are much quieter at seven-thirty as opposed to the very end of the day. Teachers are working hard to get kids engaged and active when they're coming in with, you know, I think five hours of sleep is probably a good estimate. Last year, we did some work advisory, surveying kids about the amount of sleep that they got, and it was around five hours on average at their age, just not getting enough rest. And we're asking a lot of them, as I was leaving to come over for this meeting tonight, kids were getting ready for jazz band, so they either ran home or stayed through, and so they had a full school day, two, three hours of jazz band rehearsal, a couple hours of homework in between, they're not gonna go late to bed when they get home, they're gonna be up. So it's a concern of mine, I feel like it has such a long-term cumulative effect on them, by the time June comes around, I hear all the time from parents, kids started summer vacation, immediately got sick. If they're worn out, as soon as there's a break, they end up getting sick, they're vulnerable, give them a rest, do a thing.
I think it's, in some of the articles that you gave to us, Joe, it was clear that this is, this is only one piece of the puzzle. There's an education for everybody to learn about what the negative effects of sleep deprivation are, but this is just one piece of the puzzle. But it's interesting to hear your anecdotal, John, that kids are coming in with their coffee and really tired, and, you know, I think, I don't know, this is just my own observation, I felt like I was busy when I was in high school, but it doesn't compare to the level of busy that I see these kids today engaging in.
It's much more difficult versus back in the day when we were in school.
Yeah, and I felt like I was a pretty busy person, and now I look at these kids, and like, you know, if you're doing athletics, you're practicing every single day, or you have a competition. And then there are the kids who go right to after-school jobs, and again, they still have homework to do. I'd like to believe what you said, Lee, that, that if you give them an extra hour in the morning, it doesn't mean that they're gonna stay up an extra hour, because that's great, if they are able to actually truly get that extra hour of sleep, because much like that girl said, an extra half an hour, an extra hour can make all the difference. But I think a task force is a great idea to start to investigate this. And the other thing that kind of, like, I know pragmatically, this is gonna create a ton of issues, especially childcare issues, like if I just look at it from my own perspective in my family, like what I'm relying on right now to make my life work, I know it would require a lot of rearranging. So I don't see this as something that's feasible for the next school year, but perhaps the seventeen, eighteen school year. And if people get, I mean, change is inevitable anywhere, if people get enough of notice and know what they need to prepare for, and it's better for kids, I think we should be driven.
Certainly, you don't have to do a huge educational campaign, because the students, like you said, I touch base with my high school students, and they're like, no way, I don't wanna start later, but I've got, I've got sports, I've got this, I've got that out there, there's gonna be enough day one and the day two, so it's gonna be a huge educational campaign. We definitely want to study this and get feedback from all stakeholders, but it's gonna be the education that goes into this, because it is a huge paradigm change.
Absolutely, I mean, it would be difficult for me, but I can personally say it would be a huge change, and I'd have to change my plans, of course, you know. Everybody's got their own situation, everyone's gonna be in their own, their own shift that has to happen within their families. But it's definitely, I mean, when you hear the studies, you can't ignore it. And if you also think about how their performance could possibly be enhanced in schools, and that they have even a more productive experience in schools, I mean, that's what's at its heart.
Well, there's a lot of research out there too, that I'm sure you have, that shows the effect of, like, tardiness goes down by a third almost immediately, the car crashes are cut in half, so there's so much research on the effects already that they know about.
A lot of those risk-taking behaviors that oftentimes lead into other behavioral problems and things like that are also a factor, quite quickly.
Absolutely, John, they didn't make an amendment to their mock.
No, they did. I think, I think if they had, they would have moved it to, you know, because I think it was nine o'clock, so I think that was a little late, so I think, I think if there was to be an amendment, they might have moved it up, but I don't know if it really would have convinced the majority of them.
We may not have explained the amendment, they can make amendments at that point, yeah.
In your viewpoint as the high school principal, if you had your druthers, what would be the ideal start time, given all the factors?
I think listening to the kids and hearing that nine o'clock is too late, trying to find a compromise, I think eight-fifteen would make a considerable difference for our kids, being to get a little more rest. You mentioned it with the bus routes, kids who are going out to catch a bus at six-thirty in the morning, that isn't really an early start.
It's dark in the winter, too. Just from a different perspective, like for any kid who has to walk to a bus stop, which my children do, it's dark.
It's depressing. I think that would mitigate the inequality of employers, I think they'd be willing to work with kids and allow them to start their shift a little bit later, they need the help as well, and they would work with the school in that regard. I think from an athletic standpoint, it wouldn't have that many complications. We start our soccer games at four o'clock already anyway, and there are three-thirty starts for other games, but that could be managed, especially with our league, we're all so close to each other. So I think finding that middle ground and getting our kids a little more sleep every night would be really good then.
My addition, when you talk about the education, I mean, the public is becoming more aware too of not just changing the hours, paying for hours, but the quality of sleep as well, you know, so that it's more beneficial and restful. Things like not engaging in screen time and television, a lot of kids go to sleep on the TV, I don't know. The blue light interferes with sleep.
Yeah, we talked about just an educational campaign, there were so many different factors. This is just one small piece of the puzzle that could potentially help in a lot of different areas, as you just pointed out, not necessarily just educationally, but with, you know, accidents related to driving and risky behaviors, depression, everything, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of to be gained by getting these kids more sleep.
To check it one more time, sorry. The push of our wellness week is going to increase kids' awareness of mindfulness and how they can support their health by being aware of things that they took for their needs, just the way it is, they're gonna get up, this is what to eat, this is what we exercise, but to give them some strategies on how to gain control over those aspects of their lives. And I hear about communities taking eighteen months to educate parents and kids and teachers and administrators, that's really exciting to me, because I agree with you, this is just one piece of the puzzle. But we recognize that our kids are vulnerable, and sleep is one part of it, but the more we can do to support their, not only a structure, logistics that support their health and wellbeing, but provide the education that can support, the better off they are, I think.
And I think if we start off with that education piece, talking about the quality of sleep and how to get better sleep, and give parents an opportunity to really figure out how they're gonna make this work in their lives, because again, like you said, Joe, this was based on agrarian lifestyle, and things shift, it's funny that this has lasted as long as it has in some respects. But everybody gets used to change, it's just good to give people some, you know, some time to adapt to the change and to make plans to accommodate the change. But I think we should, at the bare minimum, start with an education piece. Jay?
The only thing I'd offer is, I think the biggest challenge to this is gonna be managing your busing. I mean, educating people, all the good things are all great, but you've gotta figure out a way to manage your bus routes, so that you don't double your cost of transportation in an effort to do this. We run three routes right now, we pay by the day, but to cut that down to say two runs instead of three runs, you're gonna increase the quantity of buses, which means you're gonna be paying another three-hundred-some-odd dollars per day, per bus, based on whatever contract ends up at that point. That is the biggest challenge, I think, in any of this, is how you manage your routes and your transportation, so that you can make it all work within the three different, you know, levels of school.
We used to be a two-tier system, so.
We were smaller though, we only had two schools.
Did that make the difference?
Well, we only had two schools, we had this building.
We had three, the two elementaries and then this building.
You know, it would be easy to have kids be on the same bus, they go to this school as good as one o'clock, it's three minutes down the road. It doesn't work with Memorial and this school, it works with Memorial and Nittany, but you're not gonna have Memorial kids on the bus with the high school kids.
Just thinking out loud that we're part of the world, you know, and again, it's not coming up with the solution, it's just a thought off the top of my head. Say you have the high school and the middle school on the same schedule, and you have the same basic bus route. The talk, and I think this has come up at the school committee level, about, well, gee, why is the bus only half-full? And why is the bus only have three or four kids on it, and so on? The challenging thing is realize when we create the routes, we're planning a seat for every single kid out, but oftentimes, you have a situation where the parents are driving. So the conundrum is, you know, is there a way potentially that you could have bus routes that are realistic in accounting for kids that are actually taking the bus on a daily basis? I think that's going to be a tremendous challenge.
Well, I know this is just the very beginning stages of this, but would it be of any use to survey parents as to?
Oh, I think so.
Who's driving and who's consistently taking the bus? Just to kind of get the, if their, if parents are committed to driving their students, their children to school every day, that typically doesn't change very much. I know my son to school every day, you know, because he's not gonna get up at six-thirty and catch the bus. But some people want to drive their kids to school, and they don't want them to take the bus, so if we, if we had an idea of what parents really don't really care to have their kids on the bus, and the parents that are, you know, sending their kids on the bus.
But do we have to have a spot?
You are required to have a spot for every student.
So it doesn't matter, even if a parent said, I will absolutely not be putting my child on the bus?
What if the car breaks down someday and they decide that, you know what, you're gonna have to take the bus today, because my car's in the shop? You have to, you know, that doesn't mean they won't, but you have to have the room on the bus. And typically, the way it is now, the thing is, the high school routes are like half-full at that or less, because a lot of high school kids drive.
Right.
But, you know, you don't have a system where you could actually say, all right, you pay a fee to take the bus, so you get there on your own, and then you'll have more exact numbers. So you're kind of stuck with some of that. There's a little bit of fluid, you know, fluidity to how many seats you have to provide, because you know some kids are just not gonna be on the bus every day. But you do have to have a seat available for any kid who wants to take the bus on any given day, and you may not know that until that day.
Right. That makes it tricky.
Yeah, very.
That makes it very tricky.
Like I said, I think that's the challenge to this, is figuring out your routes and stuff. You know, as Joe said, you know, could you have middle school and high school start at the same time? And logistically, you know, yeah, you could have kids from Mendon, they come here, it's on the line, they drop kids off here, they go to Nittany, but the opposite would be the case in Upton, they're gonna pick up kids, go to Nittany, and then come here, so now you're crossing back and forth. And what I did learn over the summer, I tried to see if there was a way to eliminate one of the SI buses that takes the kids to Clark, just because it's expensive, so I decided one day I would go drive the route, just drive the entire route to every stop that we had made for. Took me an hour and twenty-five minutes to go to every place in Upton, because it's, you know, either they lived in Grafton, Upton, or they lived in Milford, Upton, or they, you know, it's like everywhere, I couldn't believe how long it took to drive that whole route.
That's crazy. But I think that will be part of the conversation if we can form a committee to really start investigating this. You know, that's not something that I'm super aware of, but, you know, Joe is, and tell Stone, we can crunch some numbers to figure out what could be feasible.
Definitely.
Any other discussions? Do you have any correspondences?
We do not.
Okay. Any other matters not anticipated by the committee within forty-eight hours of the Future agenda items include the approval of the Mercy Technology Plan on May ninth, presentation of COTC software on May ninth, and the Golden Apple Award on June twentieth. Is there any further ado, if we have a portion to adjourn? Make them adjourn. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned at seven forty-seven.